First item, minutes of the public hearing. Move approval? To Dr. Luke, Mr. Spear's second. Discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called for? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Next item is minutes of the regular meet, March nineteenth.
Move approval?
Second. I have one more correction on page two. Down next to the last paragraph, mis-spelled there it says, "A particular Tilling." I think it was that thing.
No, it's Tilling.
Is it Tilling?
Okay.
Tyler.
Tyler.
Hold for questions. Okay. Questions been called for? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Asked, unanimous? Uh, next item on the agenda is proclamation of the cleanup date. I declared April twenty-second, uh, the cleanup day for the Barrett Roomy Club University of Montana. And we're gonna have the cleanup day to go around, they're gonna run it. Uh, we're gonna meet down at the Deepo Park. And any volunteers or anybody who wants to go around and help clean up, sub your billings. There's more than welcome.
It's twelve to three.
And if anybody wants, you can call Sarah Maslin at the number five four one four nine zero two seven eight one. Again?
There's gonna be a picnic afterwards too.
Well, they're throwing, yeah, still have some hamburgers, I think, or something like that, and, and some live music. And I think they're looking into getting popped in that, so. Okay. Next item, thank you from the little shooters. Looks like they got together a little card here with everybody signing it, thanking us for letting them use it down the stairs. Good little program. Next item is the municipal elective officials workshop. It's gonna be held next month on the seventh to the ninth in Billings. So, uh, I think they reserved the rooms until April, what was it, eighteenth, I think? Yeah, and so maybe by before next meeting or something, whoever wants to go, get ahold of me. We also, if we're deciding if the council is a very good thing, I recommend we all should go if we can, okay? And, but if we go, it starts on the night of the meeting, so we have to push it to next, or that meeting, the first meeting of May, and push it to Tuesday if we could. And so I'll put that on the agenda for next meeting to do that if you so want.
Wouldn't that depend upon as to how many were going? As to if you still have five of them at the council meeting, then the regular date is still on?
Well, if that's what the council so wants.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't know until we had an indication as to how many people wanted to go to it. That's what I'm saying, yeah.
If the council so wants to have it Wednesday instead of Tuesday? I mean, it does depend on how many's leaving. I mean, if four goes, then you don't have a whole.
Like you said, Mr. Mayor, wait till this, next time you can have the reservations figured out.
Okay. It is well worth it. Okay. On the mayor's report to the city council, we have a request from the Naughty Pine for a street closure on July.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion?
Sign, I don't, there's no sign out from the form, but is everything okay, Paul and Mike?
Yes. Here's, I can see everything good to go.
Looks that way to me.
Entire department also.
Hold for question? Question's been called for? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Unanimous? Next one on the agenda is to set a public hearing date for the combined hearing with planning board for the Beaver Pride major subdivision. Is there a date that the planning board?
Yeah, the planning board, uh, planning board had a meeting last night, and they picked the twenty-ninth of April at six o'clock in this room. We need a motion from the council to accept that.
I would make that motion.
Second.
Moved second, discussion?
That was six P.M., right?
Yes.
Army time.
Call for the question? Okay. Question's been called for? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous? We'll set out the public notice for that to be so. Okay, next one on the agenda, resolution amending and superseding Resolution ten oh eight by setting the fees for processing applications for creation of subdivisions by lease or rent obtained for or more buildings.
So moved.
Second.
Who's who's second? Danny Knight. Okay. It moved in second, discussion?
Call for the question?
Question called for, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Unanimous? Next one on the agenda is an ordinance amending the Dillon Municipal Code, Title sixteen, that conformed to recent additions and amendments to the Montana Code annotated by enacting a new chapter.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded? Uh, discussion?
Question?
Questions been called for? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Unanimous? Next one on the agenda, an ordinance amending the Dillon Municipal Code, Section sixteen fifty seventy, to conform to recent additions and amendments to the Montana Code ante by amending the definitions of the term subdivision found in Dillon Municipal Code sixteen fifty seventy and Municipal MCA seventy-six-three one oh three.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, David's moved, Mr. Archer's second, discussion?
Call for the question?
Question's been called for, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Unanimous? Next item, an ordinance amending the Dillon Municipal Code, Section sixteen fifty seventy, to conform to recent additions and amendments to the Montana Code ante by amending Dillon Municipal Code sixteen dash eight dash fifteen three.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded? Discussion?
Question?
Question's been called for, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Yes?
I would like to thank the planning board and the attorney that assisted us on this because it was an incredibly difficult statute to get worked out, so a lot of hard work went into it.
Yes, thank you for all the members of the planning board. Okay, next item on the agenda is appoint Danny Knight to library board. He has took the hope and the help there for that, so moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion?
You really want her?
Now, don't ask him that! Call for a question? Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Is unanimous? Okay, next item on the agenda is the monthly revenue report. Check out handout.
Handout.
Yeah, there it is on your handouts last page. Move approval?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion? Call for questions? Questions been called for, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Unanimous? Looking, we're doing okay. Citizens' request, are you looking over it? Want to give you a minute to look it over, or any questions? Okay, well, go on, Mel. Next item, report city attorney, uh, the officer, city attorney Jim Dillon.
James Dillon. I want to take a moment to thank Mr. Spear and Ms. Westet for meeting with excuses at some point during the last, the interim between the last council meeting and this one. I thought the meetings were constructive, and I would encourage the rest of you to do the same. I know some of you have attempted to schedule, and it doesn't work out. I think that's real helpful to get a sense from you all about what you all are thinking about things. And to work better with the community as well. The only other news personally is I have signed a lease on an apartment, so it will be moving, so I'm not going to keep you all in suspense, and we still do that now, it's the same. I think that's quite a good deal, so.
Okay? Okay. Next item on the, uh, the agenda is planning board, how about Danny Knight? Did you, was there anything on? I know he had a meeting Tuesday. Are we gonna wait for the minutes?
Yeah, we, they, uh, went over the, uh, new subdivision a little bit, and decided on dates, and how long it's gonna take. We have a certain amount of time to get it to council and get it passed or disapproved, whatever. We discussed that, and that's pretty much about it.
Yeah, we're just gonna be on meeting over the next two months.
Yeah, a lot of meetings.
Oh, yeah.
Because we gotta combine zoning too, and work with them.
Okay?
But it's a good project, and I think it will be successful, and I think if the council receives it, we'll place it in addition to Dillon, that it can bring a lot back.
There was a public meeting scheduled, uh, April eighth at seven o'clock. That will be a planning board meeting, uh, we'll get noticed, um, uh, and it is to look at this Beaver Pride major subdivision. So, uh, it's at seven, and the engineer and the developer will be here to explain their project to the planning board.
I couldn't see anywhere in the, it's down the road, it's, uh...
It's east of Safeway. It's the...
Do it, that house.
Right.
In the city, right?
Right.
Well, not yet in the city. So it'll be annexation, zoning, and subdivision.
Um, on that note too, we have a public copy, if any of you would like to come, uh, down here to the city and look at that copy, uh, that application, uh, feel free to do so. So when we have the hearing on the twenty-ninth, uh, then you have, have time to look at it, so. As for the public, the council will get their copies after the, uh, I believe the planning board does their review, so. Any comments or questions?
Okay. So any commissioning?
Well, in conjunction with the planning board and that subdivision, we've got a meeting scheduled, which date I can't remember, but it'll get posted and such, and we'll go over the zoning part of the subdivision. The seventh, okay?
That's also at seven?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Director of Operations, Mr. Turner?
No, I guess I'm not. Uh, here's a list of zoning compliance certificates that were applied for, and the same one was issued. Any comments on those? Wanted to give you a little report on the Building Active Communities, uh, seminar that I went to last week, or week before last, I guess it was, in Bozeman. Uh, Larry Skiles, Sue Hampson, uh, Larry and Lois Vulcanin and myself attended that. Very interesting, um, and, uh, the group is putting together a PowerPoint for, you know, so they can go and talk to the Rotary, the Kiwanis, and they will come here to the city council as well. So, we're just starting to get that, uh, schedule put together. Pretty, pretty interesting, uh, planning information and, and, uh, the cost to, the cost to the communities, uh, as far as what sedentary lifestyles and stuff like that cost the community in, in healthcare. So I, I thought it was very, very worthwhile. More to follow on that.
Good. Okay? Please Chief, Mr. Kraft.
Other than the trials and tribulations and trying to make places fit, within the next few days, we should have our Duke Patrol vehicle up and moving on the streets. Other than that, everything's running good.
Power outage, excuse me.
Yeah.
Okay. Fire Chief, Mr. McGinnity.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fire Department meets on the first Tuesday of every month, and as in technical, in the month of April is election night, uh, so I'd like to report, uh, last night we had the elections of the officers, and, uh, actually, they stayed the same as, uh, they were last year. Actually, the same as they have been for the last two years of, uh, myself re-elected as chief, Darren Marask as, uh, assistant chief, uh, Jack Bergerson's secretary, and, uh, Mike Morrow, uh, treasurer. I don't know if it takes, uh, council approval on the chief's position, but if it is, I guess that's into your laps of, of whatever it is, so.
Move approval?
Well, it's really not on the agenda. We're about to do a next step.
The next step?
We'll put it on the agenda next time.
And then, uh, second of all, uh, once again, uh, we had one of our new rookie firemen. Uh, he was a young kid, uh, for reasons, he had to quit and move back to Billings, so he left us, so, uh, we went through the interview process, and also last night, appointed a new fireman, uh, by the name of Jay Hoggett. So I would request to get that on the agenda for, uh, next council meeting to adopt, or approve him. Uh, I'll see if I can get him and his wife and family down here.
Did you have a little information given about him?
Yeah, he's, uh, you know, we, we had, actually, it was a pretty impressive, we thought we were running out of the pool of volunteers, but we had actually seven, uh, people that went through the physical and the interview process, and, um, all seven of them were really, uh, great candidates. Uh, this one we chose, uh, he's thirty-eight years old. He moved here with his family, uh, up to Barrett Hospital, I think his wife, uh, works up there. He had a employment contract for, I guess it was a ninety-day contract up there with, of what he was doing. He's sort of an IT kind of a person. Interviewed really great, uh, I mean, he's just a really, uh, really a neat guy. They're wanting to make Dillon their home, so instead of putting on something like we have here of late of twenty-two-year-old people, we've got us a thirty-eight-year-old gung-ho guy that's ready to get on the department. He showed up to meeting last night, and, uh, and I hope you guys would be as impressed as him as we were. I think, I think he'll be quite an asset to, hopefully start some more of this long journey to the department. There are quite a, right now, we are sitting on quite a pool of, uh, real good viable candidates to get on the fire department. We limit it to the thirty-two, uh, just because of cost and everything else, get them all suited up. So if we can keep the thirty-two men in the department together, it's, it's working great, so. Those would be the two things for next, uh, council meeting.
Will be.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. Uh, Judge Shay Erwin, excused. Uh, Treasurer, Mr. Cobb. I have a handout from him. Do it. Not really clear copy, I didn't really do good. But I just got this, this late tonight, that Mr. Cobb has put in his resignation from treasurer. So, and he gave this letter. So, just for your information. Okay? Uh, in your packet, the next one on here is library board minutes. Remember, whoever has to approve those? I don't think so.
Sometimes we did.
Okay, well, we'll go, we'll move.
Move approval?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion? Call for question? Questions been called for, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay? Uh... Okay? No other discussion on that. Uh, next one's tree board minutes. Don't have any, you have, Mr. Turner, anything on it?
Uh, we had our pruning clinic a couple weeks ago, um, Derek Ward was there, and, um, it was, it was a little snowy to start out with and pretty cold, but, uh, the sun came out about eleven o'clock, and we, uh, hanged the trees on the walking path, uh, over by the Y, and we actually removed a few of the dead trees, and, uh, I, I thought it was worthwhile. What did you think, Derek?
It was actually a really good experience, and it helped me and my dad out too, learning how to do it.
And we gave away, uh, two, uh, pruners that were worth about fifty bucks each, and then two, uh, folding saws that were worth, I think, twenty-eight dollars each, and, uh, we didn't have a lot go up, I think it was because of the weather, but there was a few already sold out there. That's it?
Okay? Thank you. Report sustaining committees, judiciary.
We met Monday, but you'll get the minutes next packet.
Okay. Thank you. Finance committee, Mr. Spear.
Uh, before you, we have the client's reports, the money night and budget report for the month of, uh, March two thousand fourteen.
Move approval?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion?
Call for a question?
Question's been called for, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous? I also like to speak, right now, if I could, take a little bit of time, that on the herb-sue-surum bill throughout, throughout the whole thing, I believed that I didn't do anything wrong, and I still do that, but I do still understand exactly where the council was coming from on their vote, and on their decision throughout, and I do see their position on the whole thing too. And I don't think they did anything wrong either throughout that. So, in the favor of, of getting along, I think they decided they would agree to pay the bill, and I, not saying I did anything wrong, but I know, I see things I did wrong, and I won't, I will do it different, and I'll work more closely with the council on that, so. So that won't happen again. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, see, health and fire order, and Mr. Spear for, who else is on?
David or Mr. Knight?
Father damn, I have to do it, I wasn't there.
You were?
Oh.
Were you there? Down. Well, um, this way, we got together and talked with the, the people up at the college for this cleanup day, and, uh, we went over plans as to how we were gonna do it. And then we had a couple of groups. The Boy Scout group was there, and the Girl Scout leader was there, and, uh, we discussed how we would work with them, because a lot of those kids are younger kids, so we're gonna go ahead and let the, the leaders, uh, be over them, and, uh, and then we'll have somebody that will drive a truck or something and pick up after what they picked up. And I guess, uh, we discussed, um, more steams, and donate a couple, uh, bins for us to put the stuff in, and then take them out after we're done. That's pretty much what the meeting is about.
Okay, how about?
I approve that we accept the health and welfare committee's act.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion?
Call for a question?
Question's been called for, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Is unanimous? I also, I had Sarah go on the radio also. We were on, you know, what's, what's on your mind, I think, on Thursday, and she did a very good job. She's very good on the radio, so, and I know, Ms. Westet, you're gonna be putting out some radio ads too, are you not?
Right, public service ads.
Not sure if you've done it yet, but I know you're planning it.
I notified Joanne that we'll be doing that, and I'll probably do some other write-ups that'll get the public's attention. We're really hoping, well, if weather cooperates, that individuals from the community will kind of join with us so we can start out the spring and, and to our visitors and so forth with a nice spiffy town, so.
And I, yeah, more volunteers than we can get. We hear a lot of people talking Dillon Pride. This would be a good project for that, I mean, to show up and, and help our community out. We have, like I said, Joe Morsten is donating the bins, and so we have some, uh, business people that are, who are putting in some free time, of course. Subway, they're...
Subway.
They're doing some, uh, they're showing maybe some of their help, uh, for people in the employees. I think that's a good project.
Agreed. Okay, thank you. Cemetery and parks, Mr. Porter. Okay? Thank you. Street now, now, on here, I'll just tell you what happened. It was during the meeting, last meeting, and there was confusion, I had it, that I thought there was a motion made, and I asked for an amendment, you know, to the motion, well, and actually, when we listened to the minutes, there really wasn't a motion before. So this is just to put, this is the same item that was on there, but we just needed an original motion, since we just voted on an amended motion. That's all this is about. It's still the same thing. And Mr. Archer, do you wanna?
Yeah. I was, I, I would make a motion that we vacate the... Yeah, I was, I, I would make a motion that we vacate approximately sixty-six foot by one hundred foot section of ground. And give an appraisal on that to bring back to the council.
Second.
Been moved in second, discussion?
Call for a question?
Questions called for, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you. Uh, next one, water and sewer committees, Mr. Prado?
Now, on Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, we had a water and sewer committee meeting. All the members were present, the staff was Jazz Turner, Mike Clacken there. And the guest was John Mandan and engineer and Mike, who was there. There was no other people. John Mandan gave us a date on, uh, an update on, uh, sort of, a wastewater treatment plant, which was very interesting. He had a big swing gone. He flew out over there and took pictures from up above and showed all the instructions and stuff. And then he raised it. And he says there that the project is about two months ahead of schedule and two months under the estimated cost. The committee commented that John has done a fine job. Our second item was the manhole project, phase two, you know, we already done some. And this bid will be done, it would be open in June. Did any explain the, tell it off? Somebody say it for me.
Telematics.
System. My eyes keep right.
I can't say it.
And they'll all be, the water project, the water will be connected with the wastewater computers. And they all go to one thing and with the right smartphone, I guess you can see what's going on. Our next one was the Beaverhead River crossing. And that's the one out here, my hair streaks, feel where the water lines go across the bridge. If you ever notice that cover shed going through lamp, you know, that will hide on a water line. So, John Mandan come in and said that, uh, the tunnel, rewanted the tunnel underneath the river. And because of the floodplain and everything, we had to tunnel for a thousand feet. Which I don't understand why. But anyway, it's been in the floodplains. So he suggested, and he's gonna give us an estimated cost to turn and go down Ten Mile Road, pass the KOA, hook some on that water line and keep on going. And hooking up down here at Leavere Avenue, and then the water would go everywhere through the city. And an estimate will be four of the covered.
Do you want to add something to that?
Yeah.
He said he would give us, uh, two estimates. One is for hanging the pipe on the bridge. And the other is for, uh, boring in under the river, which is pretty narrow on that spot. And the attraction of boring under the river is the security of the pipe.
Right. And, and then well five, we've been looking for a place for well five. We just haven't had any good luck. So, we're there going to look south of town, Highway ninety-one out there. So that's all we, there's no public comments and we had an adjournment at eight twenty-five P M.
I would move that we accept the water and sewer committee.
Second.
Move, move, move the amendment up. Two, two cost estimates.
Okay?
So move for approval amendment.
Okay, that's been moved. Second. It's been seconded to add, to add the two options for that on here. Call for a question? Questions been called for, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the amendment passed, add onto it, to get the two, or to state that there's two, uh, proposals for the water crossing. Now we're back.
Call for a question?
Okay, questions been called for on the original motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you. Anything more on the water soon?
Bob. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Okay, public comment on items significantly public interest on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the city. Before we do it, well, let me, I put a person on there for seven minutes and I have a problem with that. But let's, from now on, what we're gonna do is we're gonna keep it throughout everybody. And that includes even under petitions and communications, if people come in, we gotta be fair across. We can't seem like we're playing favoritisms, like we give somebody under petitions, communications, twenty minutes and we do a presentation. Then somebody else, we limit to just five. We've gotta keep everybody five, so we don't show that we're playing favoritisms. And that's what I'm gonna do from now on, is all the public's gonna be five minutes, okay?
So I, I would move that, uh, Mr. Cornell be held for five minutes.
Now, I put him on here, seven right now.
Request, that was our request though, and it's, it's consent to council, let's do it, we give them seven minutes or not. So I have a motion.
Well, actually, it's up to me for that. I run the meeting.
It's our meeting too.
And I understand, but I run it. Let's just let the one person, and then, then from then on, we'll do five, okay? Okay. Does Mr. Cornell want to start right now?
Warner had his hand up.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Public question.
Up in front and.
George's owner, thirteen fifteen Montana Highway forty-five.
Oh, and before you start, not to say you're gonna do it, but I forgot one thing. For all the public comment, let's try to keep it positive. Let's not, uh, start yelling at people, let's start not, uh, uh, be defamatory or any of those statements, okay? Let's just do a respectful job on the credit. Not saying it, you wasn't, George, I just forgot to say that before, okay? Thank you.
No, my question is, uh, the subject you just talked about. If, if that's a policy you're going to make, what happens when you have your engineer come in for a demonstration? Is he gonna be limited to five minutes? The bag lady that was here a couple of, uh, meetings ago, I believe she was probably here for fifteen minutes. That's not appropriate to limit everyone to a specific time period, because their issue may be extensively longer than someone else's. So I think that's a real poor policy for you guys to take. If you want the information and you want a comprehensive presentation, you're gonna need more time. If it's a quick thing like this, it doesn't take very long. So I believe it's a poor policy to take, but do the best you can.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Uh, oh, Julie Briggs? Please come to the table, I already said your name, please say it again.
Julie Briggs, and I'm here on behalf of the funeral home tonight, we have it's Atlantic Street. Uh, we had a situation, uh, a week and a half ago, where we had one of our trees cut down. And, uh, last year, the state came through and they came into the funeral home and discussed with us a different tree that was on the, in the front there. And, um, we went out, looked at the tree, and they asked us if they, if we, they should trim it or cut it down. And we said, go ahead and cut it down. Uh, about a week and a half ago, both Ron and I were not in the office. And when we recognized that our tree was cut down in front of the mortuary, um, it was after five o'clock. And so we called the next morning and we're told that, um, that there was a problem with the tree. Something about it being topped off. The, uh, last year, the, when the state came through, they said that there was no problem with it. We've been fertilizing it and caring for it. And so Ron called down and talked to the city hall. And, uh, he said that he felt like he was violated. Um, and he didn't feel safe in the city of going when somebody can just come and cut a tree down. And, uh, he said that he felt like we have no rights. And he said, what are you gonna do next? Come into the funeral home and take my wife? And, um, there was a chuckle and a laugh and it really, uh, wasn't funny. And so he got upset. And then he was told that, um, he, he wasn't gonna be talked to because he was upset. And my question to you folks is that if there's weeds, then I believe that you go and notify the person. And, um, you don't take care of their weeds, then you guys take care of it and charge the family. Um, we've lived at the funeral home with a situation that's much more dangerous, uh, for at least five years. And there's ice every winter on the north side of the funeral home. And I kind of jokingly call and say, can somebody come and sand our skating pond? Because we have elderly people there. And I believe that that skating pond is a lot more dangerous than a tree that's sitting out there in front of our mortuary. And I believe that we should have the common courtesy for somebody to come in and talk to us before you go and chop down a tree that we've been caring for. And when something's said about it for something that chuckle or laugh, it's just incomprehensible. And I just really feel like you guys have violated our rights as citizens. And I think you can listen.
Were you guys notified at all?
No.
Mr. Kerner? As a member of the, uh, tree board, I take responsibility for that tree issue. Um, I did not, we did not, as a tree board and me as director of operations, did not contact you about that tree. Uh, I apologize, I take, uh, uh, full responsibility for the tree.
Can I do the same thing with your yard?
Um, our, our plan, the tree board's plan for Atlantic Street is to plant more trees along Atlantic Street. And also install more of the pavers, uh, in areas where people do not want the trees to clean up that boulevard. And, um, so the trees that will get planted in the boulevard along, along Atlantic Street will be the correct species of trees that shouldn't give us any problem as far as maintenance goes. So, um, I guess that's all I have to say.
I understand that and I appreciate that. I just wish that we would have been contacted and notified. Because when somebody just goes and does something like that, it really is very disturbing.
It's what Hitler used to do.
We'll take more care of notified.
Thank you. Any others in the public? Ma'am, turn forward.
Um, May Moss, seven ten South Washington, other rise notice the bag lady. I just wanted to add, along with the cleanup day on April twenty-sixth, Beaverhead Recycling is also conducting an e-waste day. Um, we'll actually be collecting e-waste at the fairgrounds in that, um, covered tent thing behind the four H building, that entire week. And then on April twenty-sixth, if you have things that you need help getting out of your car, we will be there, starting at ten A M. in the morning. So we'll be there before the cleanup event and probably be there afterwards too, so, we got e-waste, yeah.
Is there a charge to bring that e-waste down to them?
That is a good question, I need to double check. Um, last year, we managed to keep it all free, so I think we're working to try and keep it all free. There'll be stuff in the paper upcoming, as soon as we know.
I'm interested, I'm interested in your address, I lived in that house for eleven years.
Oh, really? We've been there for, I don't know, just a week.
Only two thousand nine.
Two thousand nine, so.
Yeah, wait.
Thank you.
The rent was seventy-five dollars a month when we were there.
Oh, yeah.
I kinda dated.
A little.
It was on the twenty-sixth, right, what time?
Yep, the twenty-sixth, it starts at ten in the morning. Um, I don't.
And where is it again?
The fairgrounds.
Fairgrounds, so you said you'll be there all week?
Well, yeah, you can drop stuff off all week, um, in that covered awning behind the four H building. If you need help moving stuff, if it's heavy, we will be there on that Saturday, yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's a good program too.
Sure, it is.
Any other comments?
I guess, Frank Cornell, South Washington Street, I guess I'm neighbors to the bag lady. So, when I get down here, she won't talk to me either, so. Another neighbor. So I guess, whoop, let me start my stopwatch, so we just know exactly what we're doing.
I got you.
You got me? So, this lawyer, Warner Brennicky, Duke Gilbert, retirement fund thing is, got a lot, got a lot of people confused and probably really upset. And I guess, I'm losing my faith in whether or not you guys have the best interest of people involved with our tax dollars. So, to start this off, you guys had a committee meeting, what did you find out for, uh, how much we paid Duke Gilbert for the cases? Do we wanna talk about the Warner case separate from the Brennicky? Or do we wanna talk to them all at the same time? David Spear, you're the president, you wanna talk about them individually or together?
I don't have any numbers for you.
Why not?
I don't know, I didn't know what you were talking about.
No, I requested at the last meeting, if you have all of the tallies for how much we have paid Duke Gilbert in the Warner.
I wrote down, I asked Duke Gilbert for it. And he said, who's going to pay? I said, well, not me, so.
Okay. In one sentence, what would the job description of the treasurer be?
Treasurer?
Yes.
Take, uh, an eye off the city funds.
So, uh, would you say that he evaluates and manages accounts receivable, accounts payable?
No, that's more James stuff.
Accounts receivable is his job, accounts payable is James, that's clear.
Okay, what do you mean finances is kind of overseeing?
Oh, he's involved in the investments.
Okay, what is the description of the finance committee?
Overseeing the city books.
Which would also contain Duke Gilbert's bills and payments?
We, we approve the counties.
So did you see them?
Yeah.
Where do they go up for that?
Back to James, to your pay.
Okay, well, I'm kinda curious, 'cause you guys had, said you would have a committee to find these bills. And what I read in the paper, if I'm, if I'm right, I know some things are wrong in the paper, that you guys didn't come up with any numbers.
It would appear to me that what, what you're approaching here is a request to the city hall under the Freedom of Information Policy of the State. And so if you want those figures, then you should submit a request to city hall and let them furnish those, along with the costs for developing those costs and doing the, the copying and all of that.
Okay.
That's not for us to do, that's what the city hall will do.
Okay.
And I went and did it, if you want the numbers.
Yeah, so Mike Clacken got the numbers. Does anyone in this room contest the numbers that Mike Clacken found?
Well, I don't, I haven't shown any of them, so. I went through, 'cause I wanted to find out the numbers, 'cause I heard numerous numbers.
Yeah, and so.
And I wanted to settle this once and for all, so if we're out, then we can move on.
Can I read a comment?
Yes, please.
During this time, it's supposed to be comments to the chair. And not a question and answer of the county. of the council, so if you have a question.
I'm trying, I'm going to go through the numbers, I just want to see where we're all at, because, I mean, all I do is read the paper and I'm just confused on, I thought the committee was going to get numbers, the committee couldn't get numbers, they're asking Duke Gilbert, I'm like, I thought we would have those in-house numbers and we wouldn't have to ask Duke Gilbert for them.
Address your comments to the chair, please.
Me.
All right.
And ask and I'll try to answer.
So, all right, let's go through this and I'll, I'll throw the numbers and see if we're in agreement and evaluate it so that for one minute, we can get this all.
But what are you trying to achieve there?
Whether or not we're making decisions in the city council. No, but we can learn from this and move forward.
I mean, this is, money's been spent over four or five years, not just last month.
Okay, so, all right, let's go about this a little differently, finally have five minutes or seven minutes, or we have a time constraint. I'll make my speech and then you guys can talk to me afterwards.
Just for your information, I've been stopping the stopwatch whenever a councilman is calling people in the morning, so it's not in the, in the time log, it's me, okay?
I'll just go through my deal, you guys ask me questions later.
Okay.
Because this is interesting, I don't know, nobody knows anything about our finances, but your taxpayers.
We know.
Yeah, I mean, you found it, I'm not, I'm not saying anything bad about you. Okay, so I'll just do this Warner Brennicky, and, and then you guys can comment on whether it's right or wrong or whatever, because I'm confused, I can't understand how it could get so out of hand. So we're going to go Warner with a W, Brennicky with a B, all along, please. So the vaults cost eleven hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty-one cents, okay? Same thing on the other side.
The other side's a little more, it was like fourteen, I don't remember the numbers.
Fourteen?
Yeah, fourteen something.
Say fourteen ninety-seven?
I don't know what, fourteen hundred, say that.
Okay, they're big numbers.
Maybe it was bigger than that, but.
So with the interest, let's say it was eight hundred dollars in interest, that comes out to really close to two thousand dollars, my surround numbers, make this easy for you guys. Brennicky, let's say eight hundred and fifty dollars, so we'll throw another three hundred on here, another fifty there, so another three fifty, so let's say twenty-three fifty. That we've won, okay? This is good, we won the case, that's what everybody keeps talking about.
Correction.
Okay.
The Brennicky case has not, there's not been a decision on that yet.
Yes.
Okay, so we don't know whether we won, or whether we can collect the attorney fees or what.
So you're really hoping that you win, don't you?
We always do, yeah.
We, we won with the order.
Because so far.
And we won with the order, but then he put in a motion to ask for attorney fees, and that's what's still on the table with the judge.
Right.
Okay, I agree. So we spent twenty-seven thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars to collect two thousand dollars in the Warner case. So let's put that in red, you guys aren't colorblind, this will go good. Okay, and at this point in time, the Brennicky won. Okay, oh, and by the way, I have to excuse, McGinnley was very afraid that I had something to do with the fire department, because it was labeled as Dylan Volunteer Fire Member, so this is nothing to do with the fire department, you know, don't hold it against McGinnley. So on the Brennicky, it costs us twenty-three thousand. And thirteen cents. So that's pretty simple math, that comes out to, we lost twenty-five thousand. Rough and dirty numbers, we lost twenty-five thousand dollars trying to achieve two thousand dollars. Now, in the past, on the paperwork, or the articles I've read in the paper, Sweet Trozen has said that the city council is the boss, I always kind of assumed the mayor was the boss, the mayor was Marty Malice, so who exactly is in charge of saying this legal case is in the, not in the best interest of the public anymore and we should pull the plug? Who makes those decisions, council or mayor? Sweet, you've been on here longer than anybody else and put you on the spot.
No, it's actually the council. Council makes the decision as to whether to continue, move forward, or what.
Okay. Is there a cheaper way that we could go about this than paying Duke Gilbert a huge amount of money? Because he's the one that won here, taxpayer's lost.
Yep.
Go ahead then.
Would you, would you be willing to sit down with, who is your war representative?
Derek and Sweet Trozen. I get nowhere with them, so no, I will not be here.
Okay, would you be willing to sit down with anyone and go over the four and a half years and see how we got to where we were?
I've kind of been watching, it's just a train wreck, it's pretty easy, train falls off the tracks, cars keep climbing up.
No, it's not, it's not that simple. Would, would you be willing to?
No, I will not.
You've got nine minutes now, by the way.
That's fine, I'm at nine minutes.
Okay, I got a confession, this whole thing was a power struggle between the mayor and George Warner and Brennicky. If George Warner had let us put the meter in the house, it wouldn't cost anybody any money. But on the city side, since we're bullshit, we're just going to put in a meter bill, and he's going to pay for it, and then George and Marty said, no, we're not going to pay for it, so it's just a power struggle between two people and three people. Right, wherever we have.
I'd like to shake your hand, Cotton, that's the answer I was looking for.
Yeah.
Everybody, okay, go ahead.
Okay, we could have waited, two or three years ago, Marty Brennicky sold his house, we could have went down there and shut off the water and said, just the new owner, we will give you water when you let us put in meters at no charge. And George Warner, last year, sometimes he went and sold his house and we could have done the same thing. And the meters weren't that bad, but we couldn't read them by hand. George, if you see this one, you just go up alongside and you pick up and go read it. Marty Brennicky was a little harder, you had to hit your head on the patio.
So, Cotton brought up a good idea.
But how do you go about it now, right?
Exactly, but we need to move forward and we need to figure this out, because if you're a business owner and you spend twenty-five thousand dollars, you hope to God you have something to show for it. You hope that you have a pickup, a snowplow, a fixed pot full, a fixed sidewalk. But you guys realize that our taxpayer dollar, it's harder to pay our taxpayer dollar every time when there's something like this going on. And you guys got so confused at the last meeting, you pulled the L tab and voted against it. Now, we already have an engineering firm that's thirty thousand dollars into design, you guys pull it off, and then when Clacken says, hey, what are you guys doing here? You guys look all dumbfounded, staring at headlights going, we didn't know what we voted on. And that's a quote, we didn't know what we were voting on. Why did you vote? So now, if we pull the L tab, we owe an engineering firm money when it was all paid for. So it's just this stuff, time and time again, this power struggle, Bill Cotton said, now it's a power struggle between city council and the mayor. Today, I noticed some big steps towards getting together and doing better, and I got to congratulate you guys on that, because that's what it takes, it takes teamwork. I had a business, I did four million dollars of work every year, and my accounts receivable is less than five thousand dollars. The way I did it was I put a lien on the rent that didn't pay the bills, ten years later, I get the money plus interest, cost me two, three hundred dollars in lawyer fees. And I see Tom Miller back here, he does it all the time, he has accounts receivable. I guarantee you, we don't sue everybody that doesn't pay the bill, and our legal fees don't even come close to this. When you look at, you're trying to recover two thousand dollars, let's use some common sense, think about this. It's simple math, and you guys didn't do it the last five years because of this power struggle. So it's, it's wasteful and it, it makes me mad that this, but you know, we can't get it back, just like Bill Cotton said, but we can move ourselves forward and get rid of this power struggle we have. And I don't get it, it's not in the best interest of the taxpayers. And I'm sorry that I'm over ten minutes, but I'm trying to figure out how you guys can work together as a team, because it hasn't been happening for the last three months.
I think Mr. Cornell's made his point, it's thirteen minutes now.
Okay, if anyone have any questions, I'll answer anything you guys throw me.
Can we get any more coming?
Okay.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Greg.
Are you done, or do you need five minutes for me?
I'm glad that this guy was the first one to acknowledge there was a power struggle, because nobody else has.
Bob Cotton.
They all have the same.
Okay. Any other from the public? Any other from the public that moved to adjourn? Seconded, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Okay, we're adjourned.